...at 6:30 PM. Please silence your cell phones and any other electronic devices. I ask that you please stand for the prayer by Pastor Everett Hudson and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Gollat.
Let us pray. Lord, in the name of Jesus, we thank you right now. Oh, we come humble before you. Oh, Lord, thank you for the city officials. We thank you for our nation of God. We pray for those that are in war-torn areas of God. Oh, we have, we asking you right now to bless us in leadership. Oh, God, guide us through these troubling times with our prayers posted to you. Oh, please touch everyone here in the sound of my voice. Oh, encourage their spirit, encourage their heart, Lord. Cover us with your blood and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of honor of America. A pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilman Gollat, and thank you Pastor Hudson. Do we have any agenda changes, Ms. Shantsey?
Yes, Mayor, I need to amend the business agenda item number three. It should bring supplemental agreement at number two and the working days can change from 276 to 377. It's still 101 out of 200. You have a replacement resolution in front of you. I need to amend the business agenda item number six. The order has been edited to say we are only cleaning and clearing the property. Agenda item number one, which is the minutes, page 77, paragraph 1, should pray Councilman Anderson as opposed to Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, Ms. Shantsey. Do we have any other changes?
Uh, only things might I just walk around presentation agenda. Mr. Bowers is running a few minutes behind, so we'll see him get to that point.
Okay. Any other changes? We have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion by Councilman Gollat. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Councilman George is out of town, unable to attend the meeting this evening, and Councilman Anderson is out on medical. That brings us to our announcements. So Ms. Shantsey?
The City of Gochee's 33rd Annual Gochee Mullet and Music Festival will be Saturday, October 21st, from 9:00 AM until 6:00 PM at the former senior of Ramon property. Tasty Thursday will be October 26th, starting at 11:00 AM at the former senior of Ramon property.
Thank you, Ms. Shantsey. I also want to make note that also Jeep-a-ween, a unique drive-through Jeep-or-treat will be hosted by Cornerstone, Audio Wave, and Crown Dodge Jeep in Pascagoula. They will host it at Cornerstone Restaurant this coming, tomorrow night, starting at 6 o'clock, and it's drive-through, so you just bring your children, you keep your car flowing, and they'll put your treat bags into your vehicle for your children. So that's tomorrow from 6:00 to 7:30, and I encourage you to support our local businesses who have come together to offer that event for our community. Also, we have other trunk-or-treat events going on throughout the city for this month. I encourage you to follow Facebook, and all of them will be shared, from the college to First United Methodist Church Gochee, to First Baptist Church Gochee, to United and the Coastal on Gochee, Ben Cleve Road, and Old Spanish Trail Baptist Church. All of them normally have trunk-or-treats, and I encourage you to follow their Facebook pages. That brings us to our presentation agenda. We have Eric Byers, who is the chairman of the Wounded Warriors Project, to come present us with the Wounded Warrior Fishing Tournament this year. Welcome, Mr. Byers.
Good evening, Mr. Eric, City Council. Thank you all for having us come back again and speak to the City of Gochee. Again, this is our fourth year bringing the Wounded Warrior Project to the City of Gochee. And just so you know, it was a, you know, we have to vote every year in Jacksonville, Florida, where we're gonna, where we're gonna do this event. So unanimously, they say, yeah, we're going back to Gochee. So everybody wants to come back here. So this year is the Wounded Warrior Project 20th Anniversary Year, that the organization was founded by two Marines and one Army over in Iraq in 2003. So we're coming back this year. We're doing it on birthday state weekend. All across the nation, there will be Wounded Warrior Projects going on, but this is one of the biggest ones that we're hosting here in the City of Gochee. So this year, we're gonna have 40 Wounded Warriors out of those 40, 20 of those are Purple Heart recipients, and they're all coming here to the City of Gochee. So we're asking the city to support us. We asking you, Mr. Mayor and the City Council, to come out and do the welcome and the greet your service members to our great city here in Gochee. And also, be present when we do the presentation and weigh-in at the event on Saturday at 2:00. I sent correspondence to Councilman at College earlier today, so if y'all want to look at that and pass it to Ms. Paula, I would greatly appreciate that. And of course, you know, we need the city's support to show, you know, the people, you know, across the country what great citizens we have here in the City of Gochee and Jacksonville County. That's it, Mr. Mayor, if y'all have any questions for me. Oh, and they did send you guys some pens, which you have to wear when you have a night suit and stuff. So, there you go.
Eric, we appreciate all you do and the volunteerism, but all of our citizens that volunteer and earlier today, our police chief this afternoon, he was excited to hear that it was not the same weekend as another event that normally would take them away from helping as much as other agencies. So I'm blessed to hear that also, so we can have even a larger presence. Mr. Dennis or Ms. Dickerson, one of y'all are having phone trouble. Or maybe City Hall's having phone trouble. Josh, Emily?
Hi, I'm here.
Y'all are both here. Okay, good. Okay, we don't know what happened. Welcome back. I apologize for technical difficulties. But once again, we just thank you all and the citizens who volunteer. I hate to tell y'all this, but this is an AT&amp;T situation, because that is our carrier here.
Continue on, we'll try.
Anyways, we appreciate all y'all do, but Eric could not do this without all the volunteerism from the other agencies that contribute. Not only does Gochee Police Department, Gochee Fire Department, but the Sheriff's Department, Marine Patrol, the Mississippi Wildlife and Fisheries, the City of Pascagoula, Waste Pro, there's just many more, and our citizens, the Halls. I can't name all the citizens who volunteer and are a part of it to make it. And anybody who wants to lend a help in having a boat available for a fisherman to go on, it's available. So I encourage you, if you're wanting to volunteer for a project, this is a great project to be a part of, and I ask you to contact Mr. Eric Byers. And once again, we're blessed to have you and your wife here in the City of Gochee, and all y'all volunteer to do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is also in June, July, the Wounded Warrior Project is bringing the children of Wounded Warriors to Gochee to a four-day fishing camp that will be hosted at Indian Point. They're, they're letting us use rent cabins and stuff out there, so we're bringing some of the children, some of these service members here at the Gochee as well. They're coming from five different states, so we really need your help, we know we need their help, and you guys come out and have a great time.
Thank you. That is November 10th and 11th.
November 10th and 11th. So November 10th is the meeting date, and November 11th is actual.
When did you say the dates of the children?
July, but the date is to be determined. It's gonna depend on how we can get them in here, so it's in July.
Thank you for coming.
All right. Thank you.
That brings us to our presentation agenda number two, Police Officer of the Year. Chief and Officer Ward.
So Detective Brian Ward was Selected Officer of the Year 2023 for exceptional dedication and tireless efforts in organizing a toy drive that brought joy to 37 families, ensuring that kids had toys to play with during the 2022 holidays. Detective Ward's commitment to serving and uplifting the community demonstrated her ability to bring people together for a noble cause. Her compassionate leadership and selfless actions have undoubtedly made a positive impact on a lot of the many, making her a shining example of what it means to go above and beyond the call of duty.
In recognition of dedicated service and professionalism, Brianna Ward is hereby awarded Police Officer of the Year 2023 on behalf of the Gochee, City of Gochee Mayor, City Council, and the citizens of the City of Gochee. Congratulations, and you go above and beyond. When the duty is not there, she's there. It's not their job to volunteer at community events or trunk-or-treats or school activities, but when she was first hired here and came from Moss Point, we were delighted to get her over here, and she was gung-ho Team Gochee from day one, and she still to today goes above and beyond the call of duty to make sure anything anybody needed is taken care of, from taking care of our dispatchers to the citizens. And we are very thankful and honored to have you and hope you have many more successful years here in the City of Gochee.
Thank you.
Deputy Chief, and I guess all the, all the officers who are here.
Some of y'all may as well go back next to the council.
Do you want to stand behind the wall? Once again, we're thankful for her and all of our police officers and public safety here in the City of Gochee who go above and beyond every day to make sure we're safe. That brings us to Business Agenda Item Number One. Appointment of Gochee Planning Commission Member Ward Two by Councilman Richard Jackson.
So y'all need me to say something?
You introduced it, you're gonna...
Okay, so I'm introducing to the council board Pastor Hudson, Maurice Hudson. He will be representing on the planning commission.
Do we have any public comments on the announcement of Councilman Ward wanting to appoint Councilman Maurice Hudson to the Everett? Is it Everett Maurice or Maurice Everett?
Everett Maurice.
Everett Maurice Hudson to the Planning Commission. Any citizen comments?
None.
Do we have a motion by council to appoint Everett Maurice Hudson as Planning Commission Member Ward Two?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Jackson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gollat. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No, just go ahead.
Councilman College?
Thank you for volunteering in your service.
Councilman Gollat?
Welcome aboard.
Councilman Jackson?
I just want to thank you, sir. Just, just like I, Councilman at large, that's all.
Councilman Jackson, I think you did a great decision, and Count, Mr. Hudson, we are glad to have somebody to volunteer to step up for a non-paying job, and sometimes it's a thankless job, volunteerism job, and thank you for stepping up to be a part of Gochee and us moving forward and growing Gochee together. And thank you for all your volunteerism in the community, and we're blessed to also have you, your family, and your church here. So we have a motion by Councilman Jackson, a second by Councilman Gollat. All in favor? Motion carries. Welcome. I know they'll be glad to see you at the Planning Commission meeting. That brings us to Business Agenda Item Two, Resolution Directing the Issuance of a General Obligation Note Series 2023 of the City of Gochee, Mississippi by our City Manager, Ms. Paula Yancy.
Yes, Mayor, this is the second step in your issuing the short-term borrowing. We received this today, and this Fairbanks, Sioux Fairbanks is here to tell you how the bids came in and who your low bidder was.
So you should have a sheet in front of you that tells you all the banks that bid. The First at 6.99%, Community Bank at 5.95%, Caden's Bank at 6.23%, and Trustmark the low bid at 5.15%. As you can tell by the bid, I mean, that's, they were all kind of close together, except Trustmark was really, you know, a big bid, so that, that needs their market rate.
Thank you, Ms. Fairbanks. Do we have any questions from the public? No? Do we have a motion by council to approve the resolution directing the issuance of the General Obligation Note Series 2023 of the City of Gochee, Mississippi with Trustmark at a 5.15% interest rate?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gollat. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No discussion.
Councilman Gollat?
Again, this, this money will only be used as required for buying equipment. It's not necessarily gonna be used for anything else, correct?
Nothing else.
All right. Thank you.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes, so the percentage, like, when we, because it's, of course, the interest rates are high right now, so will we have the option, like, like to, we're only gonna get interest on the money we use, like, if we just pull something for it, or is it all gonna have interest on it right then, right there, on the spot?
No, this is not a drawdown. This is just a, yeah, once we close the note, all the money will be drawn down. Now, if, you know, for some reason you're able to pay it off early or...
Or we don't need the whole amount. You have, don't we have the option to pay, pay it off early or pay some of it back?
Right, or you can pay it off early if you need to. So you can call it at any time.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, rates were gonna go down, you know, drop.
You can just give, pay it off and then hit a lower interest rate. Gotcha. That's what I was looking for. Thank you. No, no more questions.
What do y'all want at the amount? It was discussed at the last meeting.
Oh, it's a $1,408,000.
The same amount at the last meeting, Mr. Moore, that you heard about. $1,300.
That should be like a line of credit, right?
No, it's a bond. No.
General obligation, no, it's not a bond.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Gollat. All in favor? Motion carries. So y'all have a safe trip. Thank y'all for coming down, going back to Jackson. That brings us to Business Agenda Item Number Three, Approval of Supplemental Agreement Number Three for the Martin Bluff Railway Improvements Project, STP 9194-00, PRAN 001, LPA 105069-801000 to increase gum-free construction contract by 101 working days by Kim Sashay, our Grants and Projects Manager.
These additional days are necessary due to some drainage design modifications, and it increases the number of working days from 276 to 377.
Thank you, Ms. Sashay. Do we have any public comments on Business Agenda Item Number Three? If you do come to the podiums, take your first and last name, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. I was up in the area.
Stick your first and last name.
War Two, long time since I negotiated concerning Martin Bluff, doing the engineering portion of that.
Michael Baker.
Michael Baker International.
Okay, so, and I was, I was looking at, and that's the work that I do. I have a degree in civil engineering design. So I was looking at that, and I had some concerns, and I heard him mention about the drainage, and I was saying that the elevation of it is really not up to par for what we are looking at, and also the road bed. So I was down there with a trailer going down on Torrell Road, and it's, it's really a problem pulling a trailer, any kind of vehicle in that area right now, and I was hoping that the city, we're trying to avoid lawsuit of any kind or any magnitude, and I've been wondering when they're gonna get through with that project, and who's the engineer, who's heading up the project, because I'm just not seeing any progress. And if any citizen that has that kind of expertise can assist the city from an engineering standpoint, what can we do to help?
Well, it is, it is Michael Baker International. We have a contract with them. They are actually our agent for this project. With regards to the road bed, they haven't even started on the road bed. They've got to put the drainage in, more likely it'll be undercut backfill. There's no limestone in place, no crush concrete.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that'll all come up when, when the project commences again.
So I think I mentioned, I heard mentioned a deadline of 101, but working days.
It was adding 101 working days. It's a working, M dot work, working day contract, so we're adding days, so that don't say when the project's gonna end.
I don't know. I mean, if you, M dot LPA project, which is funding this project, they categorize it's not calendar days, it's working days.
Working days.
And they go also...
So it's not on Saturday and Sunday?
That's right, it doesn't include Saturday and Sunday, and it includes days that they can actually work. So let's say hypothetically, it rains Monday and Tuesday, those are not working days. If it's still too wet, they can't work on a Wednesday, so...
You get, you get ran out, you get ran out, you get ran out days, and all that's added per contract, so, but I was just looking at it the other...
Yeah, they, they're at 26% complete right now, so they haven't even started putting in all the roadbed and stuff that you were talking about.
Okay, okay. Well, since you, y'all are hungry, but that is a concern for the citizen. They didn't want the city to get sued for some odd reason. It's really tight coming down that, meeting another vehicle, pulling something, it's really tight, so, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Hudson. Any other citizen comments? Do we have a motion by council to approval of the supplemental agreement?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Gollat. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
Just want a clarification. I know there were some inquiries here, maybe Ms. Sashay can, on the attachment that M dot provided, that's the supplemental agreement number three. It quotes additional 101 additional working days be added to the original contract that was revised. It totals amount, says charge for the project from September 1st, 2022 to April 30th, 2023. That time span is the 101 working days, correct? It seems like we, that was the timeframe necessary to do the redesign on the drainage for this project, and that, that added up to 101 working days despite, not calendar days, but the working days.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Gollat?
Have they started back?
They have gone out and, again, doing some mowings and maintaining of the silt fences. They are, to my knowledge, cleaning out some drainage boxes so they can prepare to remodelize. We are in the final stages of negotiating a supplemental agreement number four, which when it's completed, you will be advised what the terms of that will be.
Will they be waiting on the supplemental agreement number four to go back to work fully?
My understanding is, and I've asked our attorney to clarify that with their attorney, is once they've agreed on the sub, terms of the supplemental agreement, and they have signed it and the engineer...
This one?
Number four, that you don't have in front of you. And once that's agreed upon by the engineer and the contractor and the city, M dot, I ask him to confirm, which I've already asked once before, and they said okay, that they would come back and work full scale in good faith pending that coming back from M dot, because that takes like a month.
When can we expect supplemental agreement number four?
Um, well, we're in the final stages of it, so I would say within the next two weeks. But it comes to council, just to let you know, it comes to council last, just like supplemental agreement three you got. It was signed off on by your engineer, it was signed off on by the charity, it was signed off on by them, then it goes to M dot, then it comes to you. You're the last stop.
We're the last stop.
Yes, sir.
So, in your estimation, it probably won't be here for the next council meeting.
No, I said within the next two weeks. It is possible, since you have two weeks.
It's possible.
The next one, yes.
Can we take odds on that?
Do you have a different opinion? Mr. Overstreet?
Okay. Anybody want to take odds on that?
Mr. Overstreet knows when they meet. When does, when does M dot meet, Mr. Overstreet?
It's in principle, within the next two weeks, we should agree, and, like she said, we're expecting them to get back out to work. It will not be back to front of y'all in two weeks, because it's gotta go to the Transportation Commission and then come back, so it's just a matter of getting on everybody's agenda and working its way through.
When does the next Transportation Commission meet?
It'll be two weeks from today. So if we got it on, I've got a couple more. The problem that we end up with is the deadline to get on the next Transportation Commission meeting is like two days.
Y'all better get hurry then.
Yeah, I mean, at best be on there.
So the, 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 the timing may not work out to have it back here, but in principle, I would think y'all would have something that we all agree on, and it's just gotta work its way through the process.
So can I make a statement that the citizens will really not see work going on in that area for the next two weeks and possibly longer?
Well, they have been out there in the last two weeks.
Well, I've been down that road about four or five times, and I ain't seen nobody.
Yes, they're...
From dirt and dust.
They've been there so much, so, so did, I believe, so did so.
They just wasn't there when I went by, I guess.
The Quentin has been starting to show back up, and they have moved a little bit.
There is people that have seen y'all, citizens that have seen them out there?
Yes, they were out there when I was out there.
Okay, all right, cool. I got more questions.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
I mean, I want to just echo Councilman Gollat, what he is saying, and I agree with him. I mean, he's not been out there to see them actually out there, and they're only out there in certain times because it ain't, it's not like they're doing a whole lot. They're just trying to get in good faith, and I repeat, good faith, cleaning the site and the thing. But I hope, and I don't care who has to miss hours of sleep, I don't care what attorney that's been hired by the city, I expect this to be on M dot's agenda, or to them in two days to be on their agenda to vote on, so we can move this project forward. And that, it, it's time that this project come to, let's get the bell rolling, let's get it moving. The citizens, I understand their frustration, I drive the road with them. If you're not going 25 miles per hour or below, your car will be demolished. I mean, it's not the citizens' fault, it's not the contractor's fault, I don't know who else, it might be a little bit their fault, but us, I mean, let's get to work, and they've tried to be in good faith doing work, but they also have been waiting on some engineering, so let's get everything to them. I've requested the city manager to send us the final drawing of that... I've requested the city manager to send us the final drawing of that, what we have voted on and what is presented of new drawings to the board, so we can see them and have them when citizens ask us. Because at this point, who knows what drawings we're going on? We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Gilat, and all in favor. And Ms. Jancy, I'm sorry, you have to deal with a project that's had so many hiccups. And your staff, and the citizens.
Because we know it's our fault.
And I know it's not the citizens' fault, and I feel sorry for you.
No, uh, Mr. Moore, I want to say something. On that, uh, safety issue, it's, it's really, uh, dangerous for pedestrians out there.
I agree.
Yeah, it's really, and they walk in, and you got barricade, you know, on one side, and like you're supposed to walk, you know, facing the traffic. You just gotta walk on this side, on the south side of the road.
Well, maybe if they're walking, if they could walk until we get it all resolved, maybe go through the neighborhood and come back out, or, I know it's a little detour to have to walk, but.
You can put a temporary, some on the other side of the barricade, but, you know, that can work for pedestrians.
Okay, we will ask that the city manager get with the engineering firm to try to come up with the solution. But it's a great idea. And at this point, anything for safety is important out there. Ms. Jancy, can you get with the engineer and try to figure out something? Thank you.
We got Business Agenda Item Number Four, Approval of Change Order Number One for Town Commons Park Phase Two-B Great Line Site Work and Utilities Inclusion Playground by Kim Sosha, our Grants and Projects Manager.
Um, change order number one is to mainly for the concrete slab, which the playground will go, sidewalks, ADA ramp, and some drainage infrastructure. It will increase the contract amount by a hundred and seventy thousand and add thirty days to the contract time. Um, so the standard completion date should be March sixth, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you, Ms. Sosha. Do we have any public comments on Business Agenda Item Number Four? Do we have a motion by council, approval of the change order number one for the Town Commons Park Phase Two-B Great Line Site Work and Utilities Inclusion Playground?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Gilat, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College, any discussion, start with Councilman Elbin.
No discussion.
Councilman College?
I understand this adds thirty additional days. That'll be for the inclusion playground part, they're still on schedule to be completely proud of that with the remainder of this contract.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Gilat?
For you citizens that don't understand maybe what this is, this inclusion playground will be absolutely phenomenal for all children that has disadvantages or whatever. So take a look, if you get the opportunity, take a look at what we're doing out there. This will be the only one.
There's one other one in the state in Higgy that are up on a very much smaller scale.
Right.
So this particular inclusion playground is going to be a one-point-two-million-dollar playground, and will have, it's where children that are not on the spectrum can play on the same playground as children that are on the spectrum.
And when that happens, I think you will see people visiting this playground even from other states here, just for the opportunity to be included in it. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman Gilat. Councilman Jackson?
Yes, um, it's not including in the contractor that did, is doing the bathroom, that, that.
That's what we're doing the change order for. It was originally in there, and it was taken out because of some stuff we had to work out with the playground company. They have already started to, you know, this playground equipment is being specially made, so it has already started being made.
Mm-hmm.
So we added, there's already unit prices within this contract for concrete. So we took the pad and the sidewalks and some other things that were necessary to put the playground on and included it in, through a change order in the current contract, because there were already unit prices for concrete and drainage work out there. But this particular portion, this one-seventy, will be paid from your capital improvement money that you got for the inclusion playground from the legislature, as opposed to the remaining, remainder of it, which is being paid from your capital improvement money for the Town Commons Park.
Okay, so this, this is a different finding?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Don't bother with it. I want to ask you.
Okay. I just wanna thank, you know, the city staff and the contractors and the engineering firm. I mean, this project is great, and it is a economic development driver and a tourist attraction for the city of Gochet that we should be proud of, to have something on the coastal Mississippi that other cities don't have, to try to be diverse in recruiting, um, people to our city and visitors to come have a great time here. Um, you can go all over the state, and you hear people talking about this type of playground, and it's gonna be even more unique, because it's gonna tie into the amphitheater and have a musical-type theme to it. So it's got, um, a lot of components to it to tie it to nature's playground and our economic development project, um, the amphitheater here in Gochet. So we should be blessed, um, when the project is completed. Once again, we have a motion by Councilman Gilat, a second by Councilman College, all in favor. Motion carries. That brings us to Business Agenda Item Number Five, Approval of the Post-Opening Agreement between the City of Gochet and Forty-Six Entertainment for the Sound Amphitheater by City Manager Ms. Paula Yancy.
Yes, Mayor, this, as you know, Forty-Six Entertainment through Mr. Nathan Ball has been working with us for several years, um, on various components. First, as a consultant for the design of the amphitheater to ensure that it was designed to accommodate national acts, then as a marketing, uh, mark, for marketing for a pre-opening agreement for the sound. This particular agreement is a post-opening agreement, meaning it will govern his role and what will happen once the amphitheater is completed and open. He has committed to bring in a minimum of ten nationally-recognized A-level acts to the city, annually, and has guaranteed revenue of six-hundred-thousand dollars a year to the city that is not including sales tax. So this is a two-year contract, it is not exclusive insofar as putting on concerts. He is also going to manage the amphitheater for us, so if another promoter is interested in putting on an act, it will help us negotiate a venue rental agreement with that particular person. Um, I think this, all in all, over two years, is worth one-point-two-million dollars in revenue to the city, and that, again, does not include all of the inquiries and sales taxes.
Thank you, Ms. Jancy. Do we have any public comments on Business Agenda Item Number Five? Please come to the front, state your first and last name and address.
Good evening, Mark Olson, twenty-five oh four, Robert Highland Drive. I have three questions about the, the contract. Is the promoter allowed to charge for parking?
Yes, he's also responsible for handling all parking and providing parking attendance.
Number two, will you be allowed to bring alcohol in, or will alcohol be served at the event?
Al, the contract does provide for the promoter to serve alcohol at the event.
Number three, will they be allowed to have cashless events, which is becoming all too common now?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Cashless.
I apologize.
Yeah, uh, credit cards only, cashless events, uh, a lot of the.
That is not addressed in this contract.
That's it, thank you.
Any other citizen comments?
Uh, Claude Stubbs, twenty-five oh one, by Uben Road. My question is, what are we gonna do about the Gochet City bird, the mosquitoes? I mean, has anyone thought about that? You know, this is an outside event, and mosquitoes, they're pretty horrendous around. What are you gonna do?
Maybe they'll have a vendor for some off spray. They're my brother, that's an off spray. Is that something?
Thank you, Mr. Stubbs. I'm looking forward to your Mustang event there. Any other citizen comments? Do we have a motion by council to approve the post-opening agreement between the City of Gochet and Forty-Six Entertainment for the Sound Amphitheater?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jackson, any discussion, start with Councilman Elbin.
Says it's a two-year contract, what happens after the two years?
You, it, you can automatically renew it if, if you don't, or he doesn't give ninety days notice prior to the end of the term, that they either will to renegotiate it or cancel it.
He's gonna be overseeing and working with the police chief on security. Will the police department's budget be, uh, I guess, infused with money from them? Or will it be something we need to add to our budget?
The contract provides that he has to pay the police and the fire directly. So it is figured in for him paying them directly, however many policemen, however many firemen, and that is figured in as an expense of the event on his part.
And who determines the national level act? I mean, who determines that? Because he's penalized thirty thousand dollars if he fails to bring in, in a national level act.
It's nationally recognized, and there's a really good definition, I'm sorry, I didn't bring it, but A-level is like a industry term. Um, I had sent it to Councilman Gilat, uh, but it basically means those artists that have achieved such recognition that they are renowned in the industry, that people will want to come see them from a diverse group. That's kind of the, the definition of it. But, you know, nationally-recognized act is, is somebody that has achieved such national recognition that people will come see them, not just some local musician, in a simple way.
Read back what you sent to me.
Placed it.
So he, he has the final say in who the.
No, we have to approve everyone.
Yeah, it says events must be quality A-level events, are subject to approval by the city manager.
You want me to read what an A-level, what she sent to me on the A-level national act is?
Yeah.
"All the most exceptional and renowned of the entertainment industry, representing some of the most highly acclaimed and sought-after performers in the nation. These artists have achieved an exceptional level of recognition and success, consistently delivering top-notch performances that resonate with a wide and diverse audience."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that all you have, Councilman Elbin?
Yes.
Councilman Gilat? I mean, Councilman College?
Right on. You know, I'm not as good-looking, see?
That's for sure.
Absolutely. That's just, that's why my name was on his name.
I mean, uh, Mr. Ball has been a very integral part on the development of this amphitheater. I was with Ms. Yancy, and they've worked hand in hand. Uh, they've gotten us to where we are now, and I'm very confident that once, uh, this amphitheater opens with this two-year agreement, we're gonna see great success and hopefully continue utilizing it for years to come.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Gilat?
Mark, you was asking about cashless. You know, all tickets will be basically online, correct? And we will have scanners where people coming in, you don't have to pay cash and that kind of stuff, and you can be able to buy tickets online. As far as concessions, I'm not really sure what he's gonna do at that time, but I expect that that will be cashless also, eliminate the possibility of whoever he hires as, you know, or food concessions, that they will be able, not be able to pocket the money.
It's the new normal, unfortunately.
And to remind you, all concessions there, we will receive sales tax off of that. So we want people to come out there and buy a lot in concessions. That's it. I, I wanna thank, you know, the staff for putting together this proposal. I think it's outstanding, when you're doing something and gonna start off getting six-hundred-thousand dollars a year for the events that's put on out there, and that does not include, again, sales tax or whatever. Then we're gonna give the opportunity for our police department and alignment of those guys that are off-duty at the time to be able to do, have additional employment, which if he brings in ten acts, I think they're gonna be very busy on their off-time if they wanna volunteer to do it, and I'm sure they will.
Volunteer to be paid.
They don't, I will.
Volunteer to be paid. Volunteer to be paid.
Yeah, volunteer to be paid. And that's gonna be worked out with the fire chief and the police chief. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Gilat. Councilman Jackson?
Yeah, just to kind of clear everything up, because I, I mean, I've done promotion myself. I was young and into being a promoter as well. Uh, some of the things that it wasn't mentioned is that other promoters can, uh, put on events that, it, as she said, was non-exclusive. They can put on, on other events, but now they will have the concession. If I'm not correct, they will have the concession, but the, the, um, the event, like if you got smaller events coming on, uh, some people have blues events that might consist of about two to three thousand people versus these events have ten to fifteen thousand, et cetera, et cetera. Um, those smaller events, they can put on other events. Um, so this, this, um, the, the way that they have this set up is very similar to what you would have at a Coliseum. At the Coliseum, they're gonna get a percentage of your sales, uh, that, you know, because the Coliseum is pretty much controlled by cities normally, and, uh, they're gonna get a percentage of your sales, a percentage of certain things that you do, or, or every ticket sale, they're gonna get a percentage of it and things like that. Uh, just depending on what you, how you negotiate. Um, so just, I'm just giving y'all a broad idea of how this works, you know, it's just not nothing, uh, unusual, the city is not spending, dumping no money out there for shows and winning and losing money. They're gonna make money. Looking, from looking at the way it's, it's set up, the city is gonna make money, from what I'm seeing. So, um, I just wanted to clear that up with everybody.
Guaranteed minimum of six-hundred thousand?
Right.
Uh, Mr. Moore?
They're gonna have, they're gonna have, um, comments, you're gonna have comments.
Is it regarding this topic, Mr. Moore?
Hmm.
Okay, just, we normally have, we're already past that point, but come, I'm gonna allow you to come, just come to the podium and say your name and address and ask your question.
My name is Charles Boe, I live in eighteen-twenty Whiskett Parkway, Gochet, Mississippi. I'm just saying, a lot of people don't have a credit card, go online, so you're gonna miss out on a lot of money that people have cash for, for interest.
Yeah, most of the, in today's time, they're gonna do it like this. It's gonna be, it's gonna be cards, because you ain't gonna be able to slide no money under the table. You see what I'm saying? That's what they. That's what this is about.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Is that all you have, Councilman Jackson?
That's all.
No other citizen comments?
Can I say one more?
Go ahead, Councilman Gilat.
There's another thing in here, that there will be sponsorships in businesses throughout the city. If they wanna sponsor, you know, of course, they will get a select space there, but they have to pay for it on an annual basis. I don't think the prices have been set on that, but if anybody in here has a business and interested in sponsoring a particular set of seats for their employees or whatever, please contact the city, the city manager, and be glad to sell y'all a sponsorship.
Thank you, Councilman Gilat.
I go with all the council members saying, um, you know, the sponsorship like Councilman Gilat, if you're interested in your business, if you're a business owner, please see the city manager, contact her office to get in touch with Nathan Ball also, so they can get you, um, sponsorship information. Um, but this is, once again, a step forward in moving Gochet forward, and the economic development caused in the city of Gochet has increased since the announcement of this project and continue to increase. Um, and I just, it's exciting to see, um, the people, when you go to a meeting along the coast or you're eating in a restaurant, and they're just wanting to know, who's the act? Who's the act we're looking forward to coming? Um, and I just can't wait till the day we can announce, coming, in the coming months, of who the acts will be, so everybody, um, can get on board and go buy their ticket and visit the amphitheater. Once again, we have a motion by Councilman Gilat, a second by Councilman, I mean, sorry, a. sorry, a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Jackson, all in favor? Motion carries.
Must be having a good hair day.
That brings us to business agenda number six, consideration for abatement at one seven two six Daly Road, Goche, Mississippi, by our planning director, Mr. Scott Ankersen.
This request comes from, requesting council to approve the abatement for seventeen twenty-six Daly, to clear, clean this unsafe and viable property. Property's been abandoned, neglected since twenty twenty, the no water accounts associated with this property since two thousand and six. The property has been a code enforcement case since twenty twenty-one. There is a new owner and he's been given adequate notice to relieve the problems of this lot and avoid this abatement. So at this time, we haven't had any action from this owner, and we're asking council to approve this abatement to clean and clear this property. I will say, once, if this abatement is approved and once we have permission, this abatement can be on the property and obtain better sidelines of the actual structure, maybe some other photos for proof, then I can actually, as the building official, deem this structure non-habitable and request to, for it to be removed or torn down, and maybe pull back before you ask for that as well, but this time I don't have evidence to ask for that, so just letting you know that that might be in the future. So that being said, staff, I'm gonna need the city council to approve this abatement and assess the administrative fee and have the property demolished, I mean, have the property cleared and cleaned after the ten-day statutory period, and include pictures for your review, the code case history, and some other information.
Thank you, Ms. Ankersen. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number six? Do we have a motion from council to consider, approve the abatement at seventeen twenty-six Daly Road, Goche, Mississippi? And please, if you are, announce the penalty and how to assess it.
I'll make a motion that we approve the abatement at seventeen twenty-six Daly Drive, clean and clear, with an assessed administration fee, to be assessed via lien on the property, out of fifty percent or, is it fifteen hundred dollars, whichever is greater.
We have a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Elvin, any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No discussion.
Councilman Deloitte?
No.
Councilman Jackson?
So, so they, we just cleaning, cleaning this, right? It's just, I'm making sure we?
So we'll be mowing and trimming all the overgrown vegetation, removing any debris, used debris, destruction debris, anything like that on the property?
Okay, ah, that's all I have.
I got a question.
Councilman, Deloitte has a question?
If we determine that that trail is uninhabitable, will we, the city, remove it, tear it down? What?
We will give, as we always do to the owner, the opportunity to do it first, and if they don't comply, then we can move forward with the same property.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Elvin, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you to the staff, and the neighbors I know will be delighted, so will I. Clean, beautification, sales the city better than delighted. That brings us to business agenda item number seven, approval of the docket of claims by the city clerk, Ms. Montgomery, she's already provided them to us online, also to the citizens, the public online, so that is our public presentation by staff. Do we have any public comments on the docket of claims? Do we have a motion by council to approve the docket of claims?
Make a motion, we approve the docket of claims provided that all entries there are on are true, correct, properly entered, not fraudulent.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Elvin, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to consent agenda item number one, it's approved in one motion without, unless somebody wants to pull it, with the correction on page number seventy-seven. Do we have a motion by council?
So moved.
Motion by council to approve this consent agenda item number one, by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Deloitte, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief, I appreciate you and your, thank you back there to y'all's hard work. Next is citizen comments, you have three minutes, you come to the podium, state your first and last name and your address. Councilman College, when you get down to one minute, we'll hold up number one, and if you're still talking, we will say your time is over. Thank you for coming, please have a seat.
We need a stopwatch.
And we need a stopwatch because this one's being used. We should be able to use mine.
You have enough to use on yours?
I have seventy-six percent, so that should be plenty in the stopwatch, there you go. Okay, Anthony Snow.
Anthony Snow, twenty-two oh five Highland Drive, I know I wrote on there Martin Left Road, but you've already addressed my question dealing with the Martin Left Road. The next thing I have is on the amphitheater, I feel you mentioned it earlier, asked about it earlier, if joking public has some type of event or a family function like a reunion or something, is it possible that they can use that facility? The next question is dealing with some follow-ups from stuff before, I know the last time I was here a couple of months back, I mean, I brought up the light poles, that's been demolished, I haven't seen any progress in the light poles, I'm wondering about that. And then, of course, if I'm gonna talk about light poles, you know I'm gonna ask about the status of the lights themselves in various areas, because some of the ones that I reported back in December of last year, still, some of the exact same ones are still out. And I drive the road every day, so I've been, I've been making a list, if you want me to provide a new list of the ones that I know are out across the city, I'm more than happy to oblige. Last thing I have is, a couple of years ago, I discovered a couple of hydrants that were demolished, I got with public works about that, nothing ever happened to that, I actually forgot about it, but then two months ago, I was at the scene when another hydrant was demolished, so I was wondering, is, that one I did get some follow-up on, but I'm just curious now, if the hydrant's been removed, hydrant's been purchased so that they could be installed, because obviously, some people's, um, insurance ratings is based on a hydrant area, and now I know of two hydrants in Hickory Hills area that are no longer there, so that's all I have.
Okay, that's all I have. Mr.? Okay, Ms. Yancy? Ms. Moore, y'all will get back with Mr. Snare on the responses to his questions.
Yes, sir, we, we still are waiting on parts for the fire hydrants, we, I mean, they're, they're way on the tackle, they're telling us a year to, possibly more, on the parts for them. To retrofit them to new fire hydrants, we would have to kill water to the entire part of the city for an amount of time in order to retrofit that, and we didn't feel that was the best option for the citizens at that point, because there are other fire hydrants that do work that are, that would help in that area. So we, we are on top of it still, we are just waiting, we are very delayed in that, and I apologize about, there's nothing I can do about that.
I understand.
And from that, the spike in the light poles were just a way, I saw them blow them off the truck.
Yeah, so the pile of permits on the stock, it came in, like, middle of last.
Yeah, I remember watching.
There is an issue with the bases, and we're in contact with the company right now. We're, we're gonna have to bid out those, yeah.
And then, we're going to?
Get close. A, A had to be replaced right now. Somebody don't, you know, plan to ruin the way.
And then renting the amphitheater would go, it's, would go through the city manager.
Yes, and there is, when there is not an event, there it will be open for use for the public, there is going to be what we call a debut area, of course, the playground will be open, but the amphitheater itself, there are no plans to rent that facility for any other event, unless you go through the city and enter into an agreement for venue, so it's not, that particular venue is basically, have a debut area with some fire pits and some outdoor games, and, of course, there'll be the enclosure playground, but it will be able, if you wanna go out there and have a picnic or whatever, you will be able to.
I just know of some families, well, my family's one of them, that sometimes find different cities and rent the whole facility and have hundreds of people that come from across the country for a family reunion, for example, so I didn't know if your, the common area, the greens, can be used for something like that, that's what I was asking.
We had not thought about that or adopted how to change your complex to be scheduled, of course, it's not completely, but it would be difficult until you know what events are gonna be scheduled there, to schedule something like that, that far out, so that may kind of cause an issue.
Is that all? Also, we did vote on the sidewalk thing, I'm surprised you did not, at our last meeting.
I have a copy of it.
Wonderful.
It's a lot of progress, that is, so.
I was waiting for you to ask that question, and I was ready for your answer.
I need to leave with that and say thank you for doing that.
Okay.
Drop this space, so, all right. Oh, what about the lights?
That's, that's what she was saying about the lights.
The light bulbs, the light bulbs.
Well, I think that, aren't the lights, some of them got parts ordered too, wasn't that my understanding?
I'm sorry.
Some of the lights that were out, some of them had to have parts ordered?
Correct. Where you found everything at?
I mean, I did ask about those, and that's how I knew parts were ordered.
Yes, sir.
I think they're, I don't, it's not a light bulb that's on order, it's a part on order.
Light bulb.
Okay. Mr. Richard L. Jackson. I didn't want Councilman College, Councilman Jackson thinking I was college.
No problem. Good evening, how you guys doing?
My name is Richard L. Jackson, forty-five forty-eight Elle Street, Moss Point, Mississippi, and I am the first vice president of the Jackson County Grantor NAACP. I am here on behalf of Councilman Anderson's comments, I realize Councilman Anderson is not here tonight. One, I'm gonna thank the board for allowing us to have the opportunity to come here and speak. I've been to other cities, and it's not as friendly, so kudos to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Anderson, I have not received any correspondence from him in the last six months. I have talked to him and texted numerous times in the last six months, I have received nothing. So, on May fourteenth nineteen fifty-nine, Dr. Gilbert R. Mason, a black physician, stepped on the beach in Biloxi, Mississippi. At that time, no blacks were allowed to be on the beach, he went to jail. That was known as Bloody Sunday. Who would've thought fifty-four years later, same beach, this time we got the freedom to be there, the young black people caused a scene, and it was Bloody Sunday as well. That was appalling, so for their actions, I apologize, because it was wrong. However, the comments that were allegedly made and attributed to Councilman Anderson was also wrong. I have been put off and everything for the last six months, and that's not gonna deter me. The boycott in Montgomery, Alabama lasted over a year, and since nobody knows anything, I've been fighting the case for eighteen years, and I'm still on the same case, I haven't lost one time. So, I will be here, you know, acting as a gentleman, I won't cause a scene, but I will continue to still come. I am no longer asking, thank you, for Councilman Anderson's job, nor am I asking for Councilman Anderson to apologize to us as people. We were brutalized, we've been raped, men and women, in this country, but yet, people who didn't look like us, black and white, stood up so that we could not only get education, but get freedom in this country, and we have taken that in the last sixty years, and proven that the people who took the time to help us get our freedom and our rights in this country, they weren't wrong, and we prevail. So, from that, in the last sixty years, we've gotten aldermen, we've gotten mayors, we've gotten supervisors, lawyers, governors, senators, and we even got a president. And through it all and all, we move forward with dignity and honor. So to Councilman Anderson, no matter what you may think of me, I'm gonna continue to fight, and one day, you won't be the alderman, and you don't have to sit down, I mean, you don't have to run the streets on a stop, I understand, I'm done.
Thank you, but you don't have to go. It's just, your time's up, you don't have to leave, your time's up.
That's the concept.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
To read, Asa Villa Randolph.
Good evening. My name is Martin Littleton, I live at forty-seven thirty Jerome Ike Moss Point, I am the president of Gulf Coast East, A. Phil Randolph, and what we do, we ask people to get out to vote, everybody, black, white, pink, red, it don't matter. I served in the opposition for twelve years, and the first thing they told me was you deserve all people, it didn't say Chihuahua, German Shepherd, you serve all the people, Councilman Anderson, not wait, and I know Goche Fire Police Department wouldn't wait if something happened in Monreese Church, a shootout, wait till it's all over, then come. Or if a building catch on fire, the fire department wait till the fire is out, then come, we're all people, we're all human beings, we gotta learn to respect each other, get along with one another, or this nation gonna fall, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Randolph. Number four, Mr. Charles Moore.
My name is Charles Moore, I live in eighteen twenty West State Parkway, Goche, Mississippi. I'm asking Russ Adams to resign, one day by the last meeting, he said Reverend Boone threatened him and his family, so I know that wasn't right, so, statement like that, I think Russ Adams needs to resign, y'all need to see what y'all can do about this.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Stella, is, did she leave? I don't see it.
She left while.
She left, okay, I was about to say, I didn't even see her. Bonnie Coleman.
Good evening. Benny Coleman.
All right, Benny, I'm sorry, it looked like, I apologize, Mr. Coleman, I apologize.
I'm good. Fourteen twelve, Ruth D. Come on, Goche, here in Goche, I, uh, wanna say, we, uh, just get along with one another and love one another, this is what God wants us to do, and Rusty allegedly said some that hurt this city, and we, we should, uh, ask Rusty to resign. Thank you.
Mr. Coleman. Six, Mr. Billy Booth.
Billy Booth, Warford resident, good evening, and that Councilman Anderson is not physically here, we sincerely pray for his health and recovery. So on the day, I want to again appeal to this council, the city manager and city attorney, that we would, we would evaluate what is accepted and allowed by the council and staff. There should be established rules of the corps as it relates to behavior of city representatives. When city representatives interact with citizens and with the public at large, there should be policies and procedures as to what they can and cannot do. The council, council members need to fully understand that they are not the citizen bosses, but the Goche citizens are their bosses, we pay their salary. And I understand that this council wants to try to separate personal from city, and I understand that this council must respect citizens, um... I understand that this council must respect citizens, must respect city representatives' rights, but if this city does not put in place and enforce established policies and procedures, somebody is going to cross the line and is going to say the wrong thing to the wrong person. And when that happens, it will be publicly revealed that the city representatives are tired to the city. I'm going to submit this, I want to submit this for public, for the minutes, and I'm submitting this on this day, 17 of October.
Thank you, Mr. Bead. That brings us to city council comments. We start, second meeting of the month, we start with Councilman Alvin.
As always, I want to thank the employees, our contractors, all the hard work you do. You are the backbone of the city. We couldn't do it without you. Appreciate all you do. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Alvin. Councilman Anderson is out due to medical. Councilman College?
I just echo what Councilman Alvin said, and also don't forget about this Saturday with Goche Mullet Music Festival. Must be a gorgeous day, so hope to see a lot of you out there.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Galot?
I recognize that there's been a little bit of rain in this city, but my grass is still crunching, so let's all pray for some more rain.
But not on Saturday.
I don't care what day it rains.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes, I just want to thank everybody for their dignity and respect and their concerns of the city to improve it, to make it a better place, to make it a diverse place for everyone, and especially with the growing rate of our community. We're growing in numbers, so it should be some diversity in this city because this city is now growing strongly in diversity, not only in just black and white, but as in Latino as well. So we just, we need to prepare ourselves for this future diversity that is coming to this city, that is growing in this city, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman George is out of town and not able to attend this evening. I just want to thank, first of all, Domino's and the Jackson County Salvation Army, Domino's for the pizza, the Salvation Army for the cookies. They, our, Mr. Jancy and myself enjoyed what they dropped for myself, and then the police department got to enjoy the pizza and the cookies they left for them today over there for National Cookie Day. Who would have thought National Cookie Day? I can remember when we had cookie class at Singin' River Mall that my aunt used to manage. My aunt used to own Corn Dog 7. Everybody wants Corn Dog 7, but when she had it, they didn't support it, and she had to close it because it didn't make enough money. So just so y'all know why Corn Dog 7 left the city of Goche, it was not because she didn't want it to be here, but the citizens, she didn't make enough money to keep the doors open. So when we have small businesses that open in our city, go support them. You might think they're busy, but they are not busy. They need your business. I hear them screaming, we need the business, mayor, we need the business, so go support them. If you have anybody looking for a job, tell them, don't come whining to you. There's jobs available. We got businesses all along Highway 90 that are hiring, and I can name three of them right now. So just tell them we have businesses that are hiring. They can get a J O B. Also, congratulations to Savannah Henry. I hope her family is watching and can tell her, myself and the council and the city administration, we thanked her for her participation in the Goche Mullet Music Festival art contest, and we wish her the best of luck Saturday showcasing her art, that she is the 2023 Art Contest winner for the Mullet Festival. Also, I want to thank our city staff, Sam, Kim, our city manager, Ms. Jancy, our fire chief, our deputy fire chief, Councilman College, Councilman Jackson, Councilman Anderson, who attended, and anybody else that attended, and yet Police Chief Bever, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought I called his name. I'm sorry, Police Chief Bever, Deputy Chief Bond for attending the RT firearms ribbon cutting yesterday. It was a nice event. They have a nice establishment down there. Councilman Jackson afterwards, if you have any questions, could tell you all about the buying experience. He now is the lucky owner of a firearm from their nice establishment down there. Oh, Councilman College got a pocket knife. So, so go down there. They just got all kinds of things that you could buy. Just welcome them to Goche. If you don't go buy anything, just stop in, give them a warm Goche welcome. We're blessed to have them. Family, the Parks and Rec Department, Chastity, you and your staff did a phenomenal job. Waste Pro is not here. They don't have a representative here, I do not think, but thank them. At the last minute, they came through. We have bathrooms down there, but we have some elderly folks who need to have restrooms closer to the area where their family tent might be set up. But thank Waste Pro for donating those to, to that group to have out there that day and providing that group, the people out there with little trash boxes and trash bags to put in the trash to help keep the park clean. So also, I want to thank the Clearwater employees, our public work service provider, their employees who got out there and made sure the right of way around that area also looked nice, so I thank all of y'all for your hard work. That is all I have. Once again, don't forget to attend the Goche Mullet Music Fest, G-For-Wing tomorrow night, and also follow your Facebook pages. Follow Facebook for our other upcoming events. Fire chief, will we have the fire union at the Mullet Fest? Fire union, will y'all be at the Mullet Fest?
I don't think so.
They're not? Okay. I was just going to give them a sales plug if they were going to be there.
No, I don't think so. I haven't heard of you.
Okay. Okay, that brings us to our city manager comments. And city clerk, Ms. Montgomery? None. Deputy clerk? None. She's not on the phone anymore. City attorney, are you still on the phone or are you off?
Yes, sir, I'm here. I don't have any comments. Thank you.
No comments? Okay. And lastly, I just want to ask the city manager if you would get one last thing, get with Michael Baker International, that engineering firm that we have on Martin Bluff Road, that was the engineer on Martin Bluff Road North Sidewalk Project, that they were the engineering firm on, and I still get complaints of water retention, either due to the engineering or due to the contractor. Every time it rains, I get a message, so I don't, it's, if you can get with them and get that rectified so the citizens can say we have, don't have issues up there. Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn until November the 7th, 2023 at 6:30 PM? Motion by Councilman Galot, a second by Councilman Jackson. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.